All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carried. James. Now, I...
So, item 12E, Mr. Mayor and Council, is an agreement with Kim's Dogs. So, Kim's Dogs has been the concession vendor out at Summerfield Athletic Park for a number of years. In looking at a lot of things since I got on board and reviewing the agreement we have with us, we got like $750 for three months of their services last year. I didn't really feel like that was fair to the town. There was no way to track. We were supposed to be getting paid at 15%. And we met with the owner and just said, "Look, this doesn't... I need more tracking. Either you need to give us receipts or something." So, we... Mr. Coon and I met with the owner and we negotiated a contract and what this is is way more fair to the town. It is $20 during a weeknight. They open the concession stand. They're required to be there anytime you have a game unless it's a rainout or it's been canceled. And on the weekends, it'll be $100 per day for them to operate the concession stand. There are months that is projected that we would bring in $1,300 in a month for allowing them to use our concession stand. So, you're going to see a significant increase in revenues from concession stand usage. We even, to be quite honest, this agreement was only for one year because Mr. Coon and I have had discussions about taking over concessions. We just didn't want to bite that off this year with the formation of the maintenance department and get the park up to speed and all the other things he has going on that we will visit this next year to see if we'd want to bring it in house. I do feel like it's a moneymaker. It could be for the town. So, what you have in front of you is an agreement with Kim's Dogs. The concession contract, I'm not authorized to execute it till y'all vote on it. So, that is the thing. I have a few questions.
I do have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coon, go on over.
Yes, sir.
I'll figure out your problem.
I'll probably get to join in.
So, I reviewed the service contract.
Yes, sir.
Looks good. I have two questions. First question is, why is this second inning? It says that the concession happens at the second inning.
That's normal. That's standard procedure. You don't let the second inning start and then once they get into it, being that on any other nights, you have multiple arrangements playing. The second inning in a way, this game is typically a 15-game game. That's going to put it at 9:05, 9:10. By then, you've done served pretty much dinner, any snacks. Two of the fields are already gone. You're down to on 15-game night, maybe 30 pairs still remaining. But the younger siblings are gone. You're going to... The sales would then make great work.
Does that make sense? And the second question is, I noticed that it talks about $20 for Monday through Friday, $100 for the weekend for the events that occur on the baseball and softball fields. Why are we not offering up concessions to the soccer?
So, the construction of that, the layout over there, the concession stand faces opposite direction of the soccer field. Being that the soccer field is high on that hill. She... I've had conversations with her over there. And I say, she obviously is a husband and wife duo. But she makes very little to no money on soccer field. I offer her to say, "Hey, why don't you put out some display signs?" Snipe signs are something to direct them that way. She's never done it before. Prior administration wouldn't let her do it. Prior, my predecessor would not let her do that. I told her I had no issue with that. She couldn't leave monkey around. They'd have to come down after the kids. She hasn't purchased the sign yet, so that's trial method. I didn't want to incorporate it and say I was going to charge her, knowing that right now she would make minimal to no sales for soccer. And we... Now, let me know. We also do not hold soccer tournaments. We do not have soccer games in the evening. It's not like baseball. They have only school soccer events are going on over there. Revolution, Summerfield Charter. And they play from, you know, four to five thirds. So, she's missing that window of dinner with the soccer thing. It's just not conducive to her making very much money.
And only one field?
And we only, of course, yeah, we only have one field.
So, there's only one game going on at a time, not multiple like in baseball?
Do we have... You said we don't have tournaments that come through?
There are no soccer tournaments we hold over there, no.
Do we have travel teams that go through?
Don't have that kind of...
Travel soccer, no. Yeah, unless we get more soccer fields. Yeah. You have, right now, I have, like I said, there's two schools of practice up there. Summerfield Rec has no... They have no program to use a soccer field right now. They're investigating into that. But ultimately, there's no... It's just soccer's not... We don't have enough for soccer to then turn around and charge her for that kind of cost.
So, I have it, James.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I move to approve an adopted concession stand contract with Kim's Dogs as presented.
Have a motion, have a second for a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carried. James.
So, Mr. Mayor and Board, you have 12F in front of you. 12F is the contracts for Founder's Day. We have some invoices for services. But again, bringing back to general statute, I cannot execute contracts without your approval. The attorney has reviewed these contracts enclosed, and they do meet legal sufficiency as far as she's concerned. So, these are the Founder's Day contracts, and there are several of them there. So, what we're asking for is you to approve those so we can go ahead and execute them and lock these vendors down for Founder's Day. One of the discussions that Madam Mayor Pro Tim and I have had is starting the Founder's Day committee for next year, about three months after May. So, along about August or September, cracking up the Founder's Day committee so we've got more time and we can be more competitive with our contracts. So, that's what you have in front of you. I'll be glad to entertain any questions on all that.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to confirm that on the flying hatchet mobile axe throwing, it does like, it mentions a heading of insurance, but it doesn't talk about having the... So, they will have insurance before they...
They have.
Yes, sir.
Everyone...
They'll provide a copy of it.
They will provide us a certificate of insurance making the town of Summerfield an additional insurer on their policy. And then we also have our policy. So, if there was an incident, their insurance would pay first, and then ours would pay second. We'll talk about that.
Correct.
That's a pretty standard issue, and they're used to those kinds of things.
Yeah, the rolling games, the cost is $1,000. If you go inside, it's amount down, you use $1,075. And then since the total is $875, so what is the total?
You said rolling games, John?
Yes, sir. Hold on, man, let me get my sidekick. Go ahead. Let's talk to him.
So, with the rolling games, they are actually giving us a discount so that's why you're seeing the lower amount? Is no... Sorry, I'm not looking at it, but I truly believe it is a lower amount than the original.
Yep.
We have two.
Yeah, two, okay. Yes.
The contracts.
Did I just say another?
Yeah, I see them. Oh, it's actually the other... Yeah. 12, two.
So, they're like $875 just the cost they give you. Just, yeah, originally, they're going to charge $1,000 to give you a discount down to $875. So, and the motion, if you need to make that.
Will you change that to 50?
You got it.
I can say Miss Dobree has worked really hard because she's part of the community. She is negotiating and negotiating with the property. So, may I make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve and adopt the final Founder's Day contract, the Bluegrass, Crystal Rice contract as presented, the rolling games contract modified to $875. The flying hatchet mobile axe throwing contract as presented, the Blue Ridge Girls contract as presented, and the Cynthia Brown contract as presented.
And motion, Mayor, second. Have a motion, second, for a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carried.
So, item 12G, Mr. Mayor and Board, is a mowing agreement. So, Mr. Doggett here has been seeding and planting hay out on the other side of the dog park for several years, I understand, and cutting and maintaining that property so we've not had to pay a contractor to do that. He wishes to continue doing that. He was very transparent my first week on the job and told me that this was going on. I suggested that we do an agreement just so that all parties involved understood that he's doing it and that it's approved by the board so that there would not be any adverse publicity about the issue. So, the agreement basically says he's willing to cut it twice a year and during the season.
And of course, if we're doing an agreement... Mr. Doggett, you take something from that? You take anything from the... What you did?
Yeah, he cuts the hay.
Since he's getting something and we're getting something out of it, should we address that in here too?
That he gets to keep the hay?
Yeah.
That he has to go?
That way, it shows that there's a... I mean, if we're doing an agreement, I guess it's...
Like an income or something?
I mean, that's what he's getting right from him. He's allowed to take.
He's getting two cuttings of hay a year for, you know, maintaining it for us.
But I'm also spraying and fertilizing as well, so...
Yeah, I'm not... I'm not... I'm just saying, since there's like a... If you have to take, maybe we should address that in here so nobody says, "John's taking anything he shouldn't be taking." And it makes it more of a...
Like, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm not.
I would propose maybe we amend that John gets the two cuttings.
Or I sneak in there and take the bales.
Go ahead, try to... Get around.
I'm welding my house.
Yeah. You haven't seen my round bales.
I would propose that we just amend the agreement that with the understanding that Mr. Doggett gets two cuttings of hay a year. At least two cuttings.
You say, you need to propose.
Or gets the cuttings from every moment.
That's right. That's right.
And then if it's the pleasure of the Board, y'all can go ahead and prove it. And that way, we don't have to come back where I can bring it back.
Should he be excluded from the vote? Oh, yeah. No, it doesn't have to be excluded.
He and I have already had that discussion that he would ask to be excused. So, potential conflict of interest.
That first sentence, we could just end it with, "And retain all hay from each cutting."
That sounds exactly right. Yeah, so...
So, I have a question. Do you get... Okay, so, in the spring, you fertilize, you see it grows because you get spring rain. Then you cut, and then there might be a midsummer cut and then the other fall cut. So, in here, it says that if this agreement is annulled, if we decide not to do this agreement anymore, then the town has to pay for spraying and fertilizing and seeding. But if it's after that first cut, then that's when you're going to get most of that unless you're doing duplicate spraying seedings.
I did last year. I sprained twice last year. Plus, this doesn't technically make out. I've hauled all the equipment up there multiple times. I mean, we're... I'm doing it as a service. I'm not doing it to gain anything because it's costing me more money to actually do it than what I'm getting from it. So, the reason I wrote it in there was that even though you fertilized it and you didn't first cut, it still fertilized through the rest of the year. So, I still got that cost. And then you're putting roughly 250 pounds of fertilizer per acre.
Yeah, we fertilized it, Mr. Doggett.
Yes, yes. We wouldn't have to fertilize it if we were just mowing it.
So, that's a cost that...
Is because of cutting it.
And how much are we spending on that?
That's me.
Oh, it says right here, Mr. Doggett, we reimburse for all costs.
If we don't, if we choose not to, if we don't renew it by the January 1st.
Oh, okay.
All I'm saying is if I've spent the money, and I'd be glad to pre-raise it if I've learned something, you know. I'm not asking for full, but I'm asking to make sure that what I put in, I can do that. If, you know, I'm not asking for any cost, any money from the town to do it. I'm just trying to help the town.
I wonder how long would it take if our maintenance department mowed it?
Yes, sir.
Eight acres.
How long would it take us to mow eight acres?
Well, I couldn't even tell you. We haven't, I mean, we haven't even mowed the first acre yet. We've just got the lawn equipment.
I'm finally done with the notch. My question was just about that because we do hay.
And if I may, you know, John's been doing this for years. We're just putting it in right.
In that field, we were not going to use it. I mean, it's the field at the Summerfield Dog Park, so that's, it's not...
Dude, don't you know that's going to be the new people ball courts?
Actually, they put it, that's part of, they took part of the field for the wildflowers and the trail there this year. So, some of it's already been taken for that.
So, as I'm saying, it can cancel if the field changes the purpose. It can change the purpose of the field from the...
Which we don't anticipate doing between now and September, October at all.
Okay, so this will just be good to December of this year?
Yes, sir.
Well, it says the town or Mr. Doggett, they canceled and moved the agreement in December of the current calendar.
Yeah, auto-renew is January 1st.
So, we can, if we decide to do something else, we can stop it this year. Right?
Correct. Yep, it is.
You're going to have to prod me because I'm falling asleep here. That's a joke. Prodigy.
I think, do they have a question to answer?
So, I wasn't involved in any of the negotiations for this. So, I'm just learning of the town's objectives and what they're trying to achieve here. If you don't feel like they're addressed in this agreement, we can certainly revise it and present it again.
The only problem is it's been kicked so long, we're going to fertilize.
What are you planning for it?
I'm mixing it up.
Ms. Anderson, what are your feelings on this contract?
Of course, this is on short notice.
Do you think that we should wait and renew it?
Yep. If, I'm not, no doubt, I'm not, I'm not, if you wait, I'm not doing it.
That's okay.
Okay. No pressure, right?
Whatever you hear in professional opinion, honest.
And of course, it's a...
Even if it's for years, you have to consider, is that something you want to risk losing if you don't approve this tonight? I cannot make a judgment call on whether all of your objectives are met in this agreement without counseling you on what these objectives are.
And of course...
And he's already said it costs me more to do it than he meant.
Let's be real, it's not a service to the town. If it was a service to the town, you wouldn't be doing it. He's getting it.
I'll tell you what, I'll walk away from it right now. It doesn't matter to me. It's a service to the town. It costs me more money to do it than it's worth. So, I can walk away from it right now. It's not going to bother me. It's not going to fete me, nothing.
I didn't know about this all along. Like, you might have told you about it the first week. I didn't know about this for the first few years of council. I found out from a citizen and was surprised that this wasn't... It wasn't always this transparent.
I want to leave the contract. Just, it seems like some college student said, "I'm going to leave the contract."
You could have had the meeting in February. It was there for over a month.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it, too. But I like what Jonathan was saying about... Because I saw him writing down some notes on the frequency.
That I've removed it.
No, I mean, it's just, again, I don't see any issues. I mean, it's just, and there is no... He's been doing it for a period of time. And I understand, you know, I'm like her, you know, something that I never really knew. But I'm not trying to say anything behind that by any means. But if for any reason we find out that it's not good for the town, we can cancel it in December this year and there's nothing to be anybody. So, I think it's something John's counting on doing, right, John? I mean, you intended to do it.
I intended to do it. I wasn't counting on it. I was intending to do it.
So, I don't see any reason to stop it this year.
I would go with Ms. Anderson's recommendation, whatever her professional opinion is.
It's y'all's decision on whether or not you want to pursue the contract.
Has this been looked at by legal at all?
See, John.
Has it?
She didn't see it in her packet.
Look, I'll call to the Board's attention. We didn't even have a written agreement. Y'all have been doing this for years.
Yeah, but just cut the... Now that we know.
That's fine.
What was the adjustment that you said you wanted to put in?
You wanted to withdraw.
I'm just going to... I'm just going to withdraw. Then he gets to retain it.
I tried to put things in each one.
I was trying to help. I'm not, I'm not doing this for the...
Can $80, the reward completely, whatever it is? Is this something that we can have legal review it for our potentially recess meeting?
I find it...
It's, oh, well, we need to discuss that too, I think, in class session, but...
I stay okay with that. Yeah, I'm just... I just think coming to your conversation, too. I need to fertilize it as soon as we get on it. So, I can't wait another month. So, it just seems easy, same do, is just retract it. And let the town, unfortunately, spend money to try to figure out how they're going to carry it.
If you have a...
I don't make a vote.
I mean, if you have specific concerns that you want addressed, you can approve this and authorize staff to negotiate those changes. But you need to make a motion specifically addressing what you want reflected in this contract.
If he's going to have it answered in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure that we're going to have another meeting.
Heard this agreement, it's a dogget, it's a summer field. He is to retain all cuttings.
All hay from any cuttings.
Which one?
Any such cut, any such...
No, it's not. And he would have to...
It's getting a little late, yeah.
I have a party.
The cold.
No, I'm sorry.
I honestly don't think we need all, I don't think anybody has...
I don't either. I'm just going into this, and I haven't thought of either. But we're signing the agreement without the council's review. And that, and she may look at it, so there's nothing wrong with it. But I want, I want to give her time to do it.
I agree with you. I didn't have a lot coming into it, but I want time for the new contractual.
Johnny, can you wait until Friday? Thank you. Okay.
I agree with you. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So, just a little education here, Board. Y'all set a fee schedule every year as part of the budget ordinance. That ordinance is law. That fee schedule directs myself and my staff what the fees will be for the use of services or facilities across the town. I do not unilaterally have the power to raise, lower, or amend anything in that fee schedule without your exclusive consent. We had an individual citizen who had a conversation with the prior administration, Parks and Rec Director, that they wanted to rent the community, yes, the community center sometime during Christmas. I think Christmas Eve to be exact. They did not have anything in writing. They didn't pay a deposit. And there was no emails or other correspondence that this citizen could provide to me. Undernose to that, our staff rented the community center on Christmas Eve, and this citizen was highly agitated. So was their family. They called me, said they had always rented it, and stuff like that. We had no knowledge, no way, no way. So, the citizen's now requesting that they get a free day of rental in future for their trouble. And again, I've explained to them, "I don't have the power to do that, authorize that." And they were going to bring it to y'all's fours. I will caution you about making exceptions for, you know, stuff like this. It's always been our policy that you have to deposit, and you have to have a signed contract. She had no proof at all, other than supposedly she had a conversation with the prior individual. So, what's in front of you is, do you want me to give this person a free day rental? Or do you want me to sell them?
Any folks here?
No.
No.
Didn't, was it on the calendar?
No, no. It was before even we got, like, fall, so we had to...
Is this a re-current event?
That's true.
It sounds like that, yeah, they had done it years in advance on New Year's Eve. But we had to go away from it.
And do we even have the staff working on?
New Year's, no, I'm in it.
New Year's Eve, too.
Well, that doesn't matter. No, so we don't need staff to work when we rent the community center. We sign the agreement, get the deposit, and we give them a specialized code for a limited amount of time. It gives them access to build. Now, we always have somebody on call if they have an issue. But there was no record at all, nothing on the calendar.
Somebody else paid the deposit and booked it. It's a issue.
Oh, somebody else is?
Someone else booked it in the meantime. So, they can have their date that they want. So, they're asking to have a free day in place of that some other time.
You know, the kind of...
Yeah, but we...
Well, I was just going to say, we are the government. We're not a business. And I caution you to make an exception and show some form of favor to them. I think the question is, do we allow a no-charge service to an individual based upon the claims and information provided to us? I'm not prepared to do that.
But that's part of being a small town, too, that we have to...
We are the government. You can't invent exceptions like that.
But, and I'm having a little bit of hearing issues today. Forgive me. But I, so, it was double booked, well, not double booked, I'm sorry. It was booked, but somebody else thinks it should have been booked for them. And they didn't make any payment towards it, right?
Yes, sir. They had a conversation with the prior Parks and Rec Director that they wanted it on X date.
Got you.
There was nothing in writing. There was no deposit. There was no signed contract. There was nothing on the calendar. New staff comes in last fall. Somebody picks up the phone, says, "Hey, we want to rent it." They come in and do all the proper paperwork, pay the deposit. We rented it to them. The first person calls and says, "Hey, we, like, it's already rented. We have no proof. We had nothing on the calendar." They were highly agitated, that staff and myself. And because of their inconvenience, they wanted a free day. And I told them I could not do that. And they were insistent that I bring it to council for y'all's consideration to give them a free day for their inconvenience.
And what is the regular charge?
Your period.
I just want to let you know that up till about three years ago, I've always rented the community center, the community center, December 24th, for my family Christmas. And I did that for, up till about three years ago. I rented it December 24th. So, it's only been a couple of years, maybe, that this guy's had it, New Year's Eve.
And what was the charge?
The fee, because this person is a Summerfield resident, or a homemade. Sorry, because this is for a homemade, it's $250.
Okay.
How much?
Four hundred.
$200?
$200.
$200.
$200.
And Mr. Doggett, what do you think?
I think we give it to them. I think goodwill. I think we give it to them, I think goodwill, I think that it's a small town, that probably a conversation was made with our staff, he may have been busy, and just said, I'll get it later, and just. And all, okay, I was going on, he just, he just went put on the book, not saying he wasn't going to get the deposit, wouldn't, not saying that he wasn't going to do that, it's just.
We are setting a precedence for future instances of whatever issue, complaint, discomfort, that you do it for one, you do it for all.
I think we gotta break staff, and I'm willing to take the risk.
I, I really call it a hard time.
I said, I think we gotta break staff, and I'm willing to take the risk. So, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead, I moved at the community center rental fee to waive for the rental, Danny Hatchell on December twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Have a motion, you have a second?
They're not actually renting it on the twenty fourth, though, someone else is getting it.
No, she, it, she has it, she's already, sorry, she's put her paperwork in, she came in literally the day after we spoke. To rent the community center on the twenty fourth.
I typed the wrong name, that should be twenty fourth.
So, it's not rented to someone else?
No, it's rented to her, well, she, I'm sorry, it's reserved, it's reserved, it's not rented.
She did not get it last year, she wants it this year, but she wants it for free.
Oh, so last year she didn't get it, which is close to got it, so based upon.
That's why the miscommunication happened.
I got you.
But that wasn't, that wasn't this staff?
Yeah, but that doesn't matter, I mean, it's, they're, they're trying to say it was, it was a, I guess they're, they're trying to say that it was Summerfield's fault back then, that it was.
So, we're making right on that that happened last year?
Yes.
She says she was told, I got you, it's a long way from now, coming, it's closer, but it's gonna be yours, and then he wasn't here, so. But she came back thinking she had that, you know, knowledge in his head, and he was gone, and it had already been rented?
No, it hasn't already been rented, we're renting it, oh, last year had already been.
It had already been rented, and so she was out of a place to be with me.
What do you think we should do?
I mean, it's, it's one day, it's one day, she is a repeat, she had done it before. It's not her fault that we were in transition, certainly she could have called, she could have gotten the deposit down, obviously, she's done that now and realizes. And it, when you're trying to put something together for a family, it's a real inconvenience when you find out something you thought you had, you don't have, so.
So, you think we should give it to her on free this time?
That was previously.
I do.
I could go either way, so I'm fine with that if we.
I'm fine with it, so, John, you made the motion?
I have a motion, I'll.
And you did it Friday, twenty fourth?
Yes.
So, I'll, I'll make a second.
I have a motion as second, any further discussion?
I'd like to ask for legal counsel to apply some of this.
You're, you're hearing, you're hearing the same time.
I need more information, and I would need to investigate a little bit before I gave you an opinion on this.
I'm not even sure what you.
And I'm not sure what I'd be giving. Do you have a motion, I believe, did you have a second already, so, but you have some discussion to vote on that before you?
Do you have a?
This is not for discussion.
Do you have, you have an opinion on this, Mr. Rock?
I mean, I know, I know you, and I definitely respect your opinion, because I think, I've heard you say already.
I mean, to me, y'all, if you want to rent a place, y'all put a deposit down, you know, that's, that's why we have these, and it's a slippery slope for future rentals. You know, what's to say somebody else didn't come in and say, well, I've wanted it, and I talked to so and so? You know, I, I understand that this person's been in the community for a long time, we're a small town and stuff, but, you know, you have to be careful, careful of set precedents.
So, going forward, though, if we, if we correct this year what didn't happen last December, going forward, she understands it's not free anymore, right? You, is that on? This is like one and done, one and done.
Any further discussion? Call question, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. So, I.
You want me to talk about it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so, we had a request from the Summerfield Elementary PTA to use the amphitheater for a town show. Again, um, we have been doing in kind things with the school, we do stuff for the school, and then they turn around and do stuff for us. So, what does the school do for us? They allow us to use their parking lots at all of our events, um, they, um, I think, they clear out the trails. When they're getting ready to hire, camp out, um, the more guys, that group I was talking about earlier tonight, they go out there, make sure the trails are clean, because there was a lot of kids running around. Um, and they don't want anybody to get hurt, so it's a safety thing. Also, what I think is the most valuable is when we have our town events, I can go to the office and say, Miss So-and-so, would you mind if I hang a poster? To let our community members and our kids know it's movie in the park, or music in the park, or, most importantly, Family Day, and they have helped sell, uh, wristbands, and that type of thing. And that is coming up, um, and they do that as an in kind without going through formalities that they normally would have to process. And I think in return, we should waive the fees on the community park and the, or, yeah, the community park, specifically the amphitheater and the picnic shelter. I think there's give and take there, um, that's my opinion, and that's why this has been addressed. We were also considering that if you look at it, and we utilized the two other schools that are charter schools here, we've held meetings there, they did not charge us to hold those meetings there. We don't have the space we needed the space, um, so, the, the idea is, within our city limits, we have three schools. So, those three schools will be all involved in this particular motion, where we do an exchange, um, and it's just for those two items, it does not have anything to do with staff. Or this community center, nothing to do with this building, and just the amphitheater and the shelter.
So, have they, do we have an agreement with them at all?
Um, no, that's why we're doing this.
And have they historically not been charged with following fee schedule?
Historically, there's been no fees at all, they clean up, they take care of everything, they clean before and after.
Who's the town having?
They don't have the money, it would cost, I think, three thousand to rent the amphitheater for the, um, town show, and.
No, no, Kenbok. Three thousand was to Kenbok, three thousand was to Kenbok, the town show is gonna be eighteen hundred.
Oh, you're right, sorry, okay, I'm sorry, yes.
So, you're asking to waive the fee entirely?
So, I'm asking for us to waive fees for the amphitheater and the shelter at the community park, which is here, those two things right over there. For, uh, the three schools in our town limits.
And are we still going to require them to have the certificate of liability insurance for eight dollars to present it down?
Does anyone else that rents it have to present that?
According to policy, yes. So, we're waiting.
Well, they, they have, the PTA has insurance, the school has insurance, so I guess just we are copying that on file.
When someone has a wedding there, they have to present that?
The renter representing a group's business or non-private, um, entity must provide a certificate of liability insurance, and a million dollar show, the town center, that Summerfield is also insured.
Non-private, so like a wedding wouldn't have.
A group, a business, or other non-private entity, that's PTA, school, and.
Right, but not a wed, like, if someone had a wedding there, they don't have to present that, because it's.
An individual, yeah.
An individual, right, so it's just a group?
Business or other non-private entity.
May I add one thing?
Yeah.
Myself, Ms. Dog, we looked it up last, or we looked it up today, uh, this is your guys' information, the amphitheater last, last year, between the most, prior to July, there's no data in the peer system. But from July to December, there were four rentals in the amphitheater, of the four rentals, two are moving in the park, one was a school rental, and one was the BF and Mooreland, we're not really renting the amphitheater.
Yep.
And it's not happening, so the school is the one using the amphitheater, um, by charging them to where they can't use it, we're just cutting out the schools, and now the amphitheater's gonna save it. Um, I, my recommendation from my angle, where I deal with the fees, would be to waive all three schools, the fees for them to use it, whereas we could then perhaps get some kind of an advertisement out of this. And use it to try to promote the amphitheater, so that we can bring the revenue back in.
So, schools, like, you start by having.
I'm all, I'm all in for the schools, really am, but why are we, why aren't we just stopping at the schools?
There, there's a.
What, what about other nonprofits, like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Arts Center, nice tree.
I suppose we address that as it comes up.
I'm gonna make a motion, I moved at the rental fee for the Summerfield Tremens Park Amphitheater and the Summerfield Community Park Shelter, and the fee schedule of the Summerfield FY twenty four, twenty five budget be waived for rentals by public schools. Of the Guilford County School System located within the town limits of the town of Summerfield.
Uh, friendly amendment, friendly amendment, can you include the two charter schools?
It does.
Wait.
It's all public schools within the school system.
Because those, those are public schools.
Those are public.
They are public schools of the Guilford County School System.
No, they're not, they're charter schools.
Is that different?
Yes.
They're on.
They're pro.
No, they're charter schools, so they pay rent to an entity elsewhere, they run their own system, two separate, so you actually have three separate school systems. You have Revolution, which is its own, Guilford County, which is Summerfield, and then Summerfield Charter, which is now, it's not here.
How does it need to amend it?
If you could amend it to include, um, well, you could, Guilford County School System, what I would do is do Summerfield Elementary School, so it's specific to that school. And then Revolution Academy and Summerfield Charter, I would just name the three schools.
All right, I'll go one second here.
And then name them, should we just say?
Yeah, just does that mean northwest here?
They're not in city limits.
All right, name those again, I'll amend.
Summerfield Elementary, Revolution Academy, and Summerfield Charter.
All right, so I will amend it, I'm sorry.
Uh, this will be your twenty four, twenty five, did that end in June?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, it's, we're having something in March, it's gonna go away in June, we, we wanna.
I'll take out that.
That's a good suggestion, I'll do that, I'll amend both of those, um, I moved at the rental fee for the Summerfield Community Park Amphitheater and the Summerfield Community Park Shelter, and the fee schedule of the Summerfield fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six budgets. Be waived for rentals by public schools of the Guilford County School System, including Summerfield Elementary, Revolution Academy, and Summerfield Charter, located within the town limits of town Summerfield.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Wait, wait, you didn't get my friendly amendment.
All right, what was your friendly amendment?
My friendly amendment, it says rentals by public schools of Guilford County system, that means somebody across town can come in here, so you can't do that, you have.
Which is within the town limits, sir.
Okay, all right, very.
I think the school's gotta be in the town.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion, I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion as second, further discussion?
Yes, um, just two side thoughts, the kids that go to Northwest, a lot of the kids that go to that school live in the town limits.
Yep.
The school may not be in the town limits, but our kids go there.
My, my thing on, on this is, what do these schools, what are their, that's your crowd, that is giving back to the town and helping the town, and bits of in kind of thing. We're giving something to them, and they're giving a lot to us, I'm not having to go downtown and try to get a sign for music in the park. A year ahead of time, and pay a fee, and it end up on a little peach jar or thing that's in the bottom right-hand corner of the website that nobody goes and sees.
I get it, but we also have kids in North, we have kids in Northern, Middle, Northern High, Northwest Middle, Northwest High, I think the kids in Summerfield should be able to use it.
But.
They don't.
This is, this is the schools.
That's, I mean, those schools where our kids have.
But historically, though, have they?
Historically, they're not using it.
But maybe they would if they knew it was an opportunity, because they didn't have to pay eighteen hundred dollars to use.
I.
I think we bring back the, it's case by case.
Yeah, I think it should be case by case.
Another idea that Heath and I talked about was, and, and maybe this could be addressed with your fee schedules, but our charge for the amphitheater is like ten times the amount that Oak Ridge charges. They charge a hundred and fifty dollars, and then they have a rate for our nonprofits of like a hundred and seventeen dollars. So, if we change our rates to be more in line of those around us, we could have it a hundred and fifty for everybody else, and then one seventeen for nonprofits.
Is that a bridge cover?
It's an idea.
I think that's a great discussion.
When do we, when do we adopt the new fee schedules?
When you adopt the annual operating budget, generally sometime in June, but certainly the discussion about having workshops, these are the types of things we need to be talking about, workshop, we need to have some workshops. Because I can't, as the budget officer, do the budget if I don't know what the fee schedule is to project revenues, and that, and we're talking about fees across town, just not here, about all facilities and stuff.
I would love for Northern and Northwest to use the amphitheater for productions, and if it was a rate they could afford, a rate they could afford, maybe they would use it, maybe they would use it.
I think that's a case by case, and I would like to make one more, and then to your, I want you to extend it to twenty twenty seven. It's two, it's two years and out, we're in March, so April may do two years and three months.
I don't care about that, but I would like it to, so, that within the town limits, that we change it to something about including somehow what it, where the student, the kids that live in the town of Summerfield.
Yeah.
Those schools aren't included as well.
I, I agree, if, if, PTA, Scouts, SRA, whatever, any nonprofit out there.
I think it needs to be case by case.
Well, right now, we're, we are excluding a lot of other children, a lot of other opportunities, and giving a discount to a, a, a specific few. And I don't think that's what the government should be doing.
That that specific few does stuff for us that needs, um.
I'm not as concerned about what they do for us, I would like the kids to be able to use it and have things in our parks.
I think we, we open up the opportunity for everybody and not, not narrowly focus on a school, that's right here. I'm all for that school, absolutely, I don't want that at zero dollar, because Stokesdale, they don't, they don't do it, they don't give discounts. Our, our neighboring Oak, Oak Ridge, they do, and they have, they have made a clear policy that says, listen, if you are filed with one three C, nonprofit, you get a discounted rate. And I agree with, with what Janell was saying, too, our rates were really high for amphitheater, our amphitheater, I kinda like ours better, but they have a nice amphitheater, Oak, uh, Oak Ridge. So, I, I think if it was reduced, we'd get a lot more usage out of it from lots of different people, and we offered the discount to nonprofit, we'd even get more usage out of it from across the whole town.
So, what happens if, if we upset Summerfield, and we can't use their parking lot for Founder's Day, we can't use their grounds for Founder's Day, we can't.
They have a sale bracelet.
It's unfortunate that there was a, I guess, a gentleman that didn't follow the fee schedule before now, totally agree, but we had an opportunity in front of us to correct it.
But I don't think this is the motion that we need to be correcting fee schedules, that's something else that goes in the budget, that's a different.
In turn, if you raise it, and they can't, they can't afford to do it, I'm, I'm saying, whatever you raise it, who, who loses? Is it the school, it's the kids that you're worried about, or they'll lose, because they're not gonna be able to give it.
So, let's, let's modify the motion once again, and make it include. So let's, let's modify the motion once again, and make it include nonprofits, where you include everybody.
So I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take that friendly amendment at this time, and so I'm gonna let it stand as it is.
Okay, can you repeat it for us one more time, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, the motion was, I move that the rental fee for the Summerfield Community Park Amphitheater and the Summerfield Community Park Shelter, the fee schedule of the Summerfield fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six budget be waived for rentals by public schools of the Guilford County School System, including, which include, Summerfield Elementary, uh, Revolution Academy, and Summerfield Charter, uh, located within the town limits of the town of Summerfield.
Would you consider adding Northern and Northwest?
No, I'm gonna keep it as is for the time being.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion at second, further discussion?
Yes, we're back to that. What if we pass this as it is, but we say we want to revisit this, because we really want to get more use out of amphitheater, and more groups coming to use it, and we want to revisit the fee schedule, to make that happen?
That's what I was thinking, you...
That's great. I, 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 I like where your mindset is, I, I do. I, I think, honestly, I think the optics of this is, is maybe not so good, and I know that Lynn's part is all for the kids, but her employer is the school, and I, I think this, she may get some, some, her critics could come speak nay or for, and I don't want to see that. And I don't want the town to get into trouble that we're assembling out these schools and not other nonprofits. I, I, I am concerned about that, and I don't even know if you're allowed to vote, because you're part of this, this school system.
Yeah, she's not owner of the school system, she's not any sort of...
Well, it's sort of like if I ask my employer, can I give you a discount?
But she doesn't make money, she's not profitable.
Yeah. I do. I'm just, I'm just...
She has no ownership.
There we go.
I, I make no money, I'm, I am a member of PTA, but I don't do anything on PTA.
It's just gonna be real, it can't work for seed, it can't be, as long as you're in front of it, and the council can choose to waive that. Um, it doesn't have to be actual...
She has a private school.
Were you saying, a, a conflict of interest, uh, can be a real or perceived interest, so it doesn't have to be an actual, um, conflict of interest, but it's a, a real or perceived conflict of interest, and you can certainly, you know, you can then forthcoming about it later, the board can choose to waive that?
Yeah, I think she's got it, well, yeah.
Council, I heard you read that last time, it did sound like it's not just limited to schools in the city limits. It just says that those three remain are located within the city limits.
I, I think on the last read, I did, but let me read one more.
I think the whole, I think the whole school system, Lynn's earlier point, would be included in what you just...
I, I, I finished with locate it within the town limits of Summerfield.
Yeah, but I think that is a last of the three towns, of the three schools.
Well, let me read one more.
Just happen to be located in the town, but...
You have to take out the public schools of Guilford County School System.
Let's do this one more time, let's make sure. I move that the rental fee for the Summerfield Community Park Amphitheater and the Summerfield Community Park Shelter, the fee schedule of the Summerfield fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and twenty-five, twenty-six budget be waived for rentals by, um, Summerfield Elementary, Revolution Academy, and Summerfield Charter, and include it then.
Have a motion, I have a second. Have a motion at second, uh, I guess that was a friendly amendment that you said, have a motion at second, further discussion?
I would like to, I, I can go with this, but I would like it to be back on the agenda for us to figure out how we can, um, let other schools and nonprofits either use it at a discount free, or revisit our fiscal fees.
Do you want them to vote? Is this, um, included in the fee schedule, based on the paid fee schedule? With the payment, do you think it's gonna pay up?
They don't...
No, I, I, I just, you said it was the rental rate, if there is a minimum, you have to ask me if you include that.
There's no charge in there, a dime.
Then we have to make an amendment, because they have...
Okay, I made an amendment that we did, we all, now, for friendly...
What was, what did you say?
The cleaning schedule, or the cleaning fee.
Are we waiving the cleaning fee as well?
Yes.
Did we leave that?
I think it's a matter of our trust with the school system, they sort of clean before and after previous events, so being able to waive it, uh, and do with them doing it, and then say that was...
It's eleven eighteen, and they're still sitting here, and they got kids to get out in the morning.
I know, I'm trying to get you to get it.
After events, it'll be us.
Yes.
Maybe you'll name one.
Maybe you should have, you need to watch them out.
Yeah, I am all in favor of the schools, I really am, I don't know if it should be zero or discounted, like the town outside are doing. I'm all in favor of the schools, but I'd also like to include, um, other nonprofits, that's why I can't...
So can we, can we get this done tonight, and then we'll put the rest back on there, do that as we now want it, or later as well?
Oh, yeah, sure.
All right, so in light of the help that we receive, I move that the rental fee, the rental fee and the cleaning fee is included for the Summerfield Community Park Amphitheater and the Summerfield Community Park Shelter, and the fee schedule of the Summerfield fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six budgets be waived for Summerfield Elementary, Revolution Academy, and Summerfield Charter, period.
A motion, do it at second. Have a motion at second, further discussion? Here it now. I'll call a question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Uh, motion carries by a count of four to one. Ladies, thank you for your patience in being here with us, and for all of you, for our people.
Yes, thank you.
Twig, I'd like this on the next agenda as well, please. I think you guys, they started something good, they let us realize that maybe other schools will use it if we, the high schools and middle schools, if we work on this. Thank you.
Better, I have a discussion on policy for the town council meeting agendas, Mr. Rock. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Board, I hope this is gonna be quick, uh, so I would like to amend y'all's policy for submission of agenda items. What I would like to propose is, is two weeks before your meeting, you would have your agenda items in to be by that, uh, closing business that day, so two weeks prior, and then by that Friday, we could get a draft agenda back out to you all of the things that the board wants, and by one week before, we would have the final agenda out to you. This gives the public more time to digest, gives y'all more time to digest, gives y'all more time to talk constituents, and certainly to call and ask me, as many of you do, about the different agenda items. So it's just giving you more time to be more prepared, hopefully these meetings will go a little bit quicker, um, and so my proposal is to adjust the submission to two weeks ahead of time, and, and on Tuesday, so we'll just keep it simple on Tuesday, two weeks ahead of time. In times of passion, we've adjusted this, it's just really been a conversation and kind of a thumbs up, but you don't feel like we need to take the motion to vote on it, do you? You actually have a policy that says that, so you'd be abending your actual policy, your agenda policy, that you have.
Oh, I didn't realize that. What's the agenda policy, I'm sorry?
It is...
What does it say again, what does it currently say?
Currently, it is about ten days out, it's the Friday before, if my memory serves me correctly, about ten days out.
I mean, I'm early fourteen days.
It's right here, it's on the reminder on the back of the agenda, and it's on here to be considered...
Monday, a little week before, if I knew, things have to be submitted in the package, and sent us to go out by closing day, Thursday, before the meeting.
And you think that fourteen days, those extra four days would make a difference for...
It's gonna make a difference for everybody, for the board, for the staff, for the public, for everybody. So is there discussion, or someone might make a motion?
I, I like the idea, you, you don't have a, a draft policy or something like that?
No, sir.
Well, I mean, you're doing a change in...
I know we talked about it, Commissioner Clay, but I got hemmed up today by several visitors.
I, I kinda was learning from Councilwoman, just to, 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 to not rush into things, and I could read it and digest it and look at it, and you don't, I don't have a rough draft, so I'd love the idea, but I, I, I thought it was clear that I wanted to see a draft policy, so we could all read it and say thumbs up, so for that reason, I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it because of my...